Good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor Rachel Proctor and it is Monday, February, excuse me, May 24th, 2021. It is about 6:25 PM and I want to welcome you all to our conversation with all things about DeSoto Fire and Rescue. And this was, I'll take the credit for this, so to speak, is, this was one of my ideas and we've, I don't think we've ever had a town hall with our fire department. And so I thought it was very important that our community, as we're, you know, seeking to educate our community on all facets and departments of our community and what they do, was to actually have an opportunity to really get, dive into what our fire department does because we had Mayor Ford Day last week and our Mayor Ford Day, Michelle Kalu, was blown away by all of the things that she didn't know went on and all the things that the fire department was actually responsible for here in our city. And so I think it's important that we are always communicating that to the community at large. And so we've had a few technical difficulties. We were actually supposed to start a while ago, but we are going to actually be replaying this. So if you're watching the replay, we're going to be replaying it and you will still have an opportunity to ask your questions. They're asking, of course, if you have questions and you're watching, you can still drop your questions directly in the comments and we're going to be monitoring that. Or you can actually send your questions to our Fire Chief Jerry Duffield at JDuffield@desototexas.gov. And I'm going to spell that out for you. It is J D as in dog, U F F I E L D at DeSoto and then Texas is spelled out, T E X A S dot gov. And you can actually send your questions there and he has committed to answering those questions. We will also be having a session on Thursday morning with our Fire Chief and Matt Smith, our Communications Director, and he's going to be following up and answering all of your questions that you have regarding our fire and rescue. And so without further ado, I'm going to actually turn it over to our Fire Chief Jerry Duffield, who's going to be moderating our conversation tonight. And I'm just excited and looking forward to all the information that's going to be shared tonight. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Proctor. To start with, I want to introduce our panel tonight and I've brought the people in our department to make it happen. So when you deal with something in our department, these will be the people you deal with and I'll start from my right to left. Michelle Henrise is a coordinator at our training facility. So if you have any issues with our fire school, EMT school, anything, you'll be dealing with Michelle. She does an amazing job. Next to me is my Administrative Assistant, Terry Kortsmaier. And Terry has been with me for, since I've been here and she is my right-hand person. To my left, I have Brian Whitaker, our EMS Chief, my Assistant Chief, Brian Southern, Brandon Freeman, our Fire Marshal, and our Emergency Management Coordinator for the Southwest Region, Lauren Sanchez, who's just been a part of our team about a little over a year now. We're very blessed to have Lauren with us now. So that's our panel and I'm going to start a little bit, start off with the general information about our, start with about the United States Fire Service. A lot of people have no idea about what the fire service really is and how it's operated. It was originally established, our first fire department, by Ben Franklin in Philadelphia back in the colonial times. It was originally staffed primarily by Irish and Scotch immigrants that were actually kicked out of Ireland and Scotland during the potato famine and the clearing of the Highlands and they came over here and became firefighters and police officers because it was a very hazardous job and it didn't pay anything. So that was just perfect for people who, in fact, when a lot of our family, a lot of my family Scotch-Irish, we came here, there was a thing called NINA. No Irish need apply. So we found jobs that no one else wanted and at the time firefighting was one of them. So that's kind of where you see the history of the fire service, when you see our Emerald Societies, our bagpipes, our drum corps, a lot of our Scotch and Irish Gaelic background came from the fact that the original, a lot of the original firefighters in the United States were from, were Scotch and Irish immigrants that couldn't get any other jobs. We kind of fell into it and it's kind of stayed with us. The United States Fire Service is the only job that the Department of Labor allows to work a 53-hour work week. While everyone else normally works a 40-hour work week, 2,080 hours a year, the fire service is allowed to work 53 hours a week or 2756, 2,756 hours. So we work an additional, almost 700 hours. The win-win is for municipalities, we work almost, for every three firefighters, they work an additional position. So we, instead of working a 40-hour week and four firefighters, you only need three. The benefit to the fire service is we work blocks of hours of 24 hours on traditionally and 48 off. So it's a good, it's a good win-win. We love people who come into the fire service. We work this schedule. We stay at fire stations that are strategically located about five to six minutes from anywhere in the city and for 24 hours, that's our home. We work together. It's a very family-oriented job and every one of us up here is just an extended family. The fires, the fires department in DeSoto has three fire stations, the one at 501 East Winter Green. It was remodeled in 2007, built originally in 1980. It also has our training facility at it. Our Station Two, which is at 206 South Parks, it opened a few weeks ago. We're going to have our open house next Saturday and, actually this Saturday, excuse me, misspoke. It is great, it has our Emergency Operations Center, Administration, and Fire Station Number Two there. And Station Number Three, 1301 West Pleasant Run, opened in 1990. And if it's on the corner down there on Pleasant Run and if you blink, you'll miss it because it looks just like a house. A lot of people don't know it's there. It's right across the street from the Nazarene Church down there on Pleasant Run. Our staff is made up of a Fire Chief, myself, my Assistant Chief, Brian Southern, my Administrative Assistant, Terry Kortsmaier, Fire Marshal, Brandon Freeman, EMS Chief, Brian Whitaker, our Training Coordinator, Michelle Henrise, and of course, originally we have Lauren Sanchez, runs Emergency Management. We run three shifts, A, B, and C shift, and they work 24 hours on, 48 hours off. And that's our three platoon system that's traditionally the way the fire service is run in the United States. Again, our org chart, again, as I spoke of, and as you see, our three shifts are run by our Battalion Chiefs. A shift is Brandon, Matthew Freeman, B shift, Marcus Jennings, C shift is going to be by John Moore. Then we have our three station captains, Captain Dennehy, Smith, and Schule on A shift. On B shift, we have Anderson, Barnesworth, and Harris. And then on C shift, Captain Kirk, Bentley, and Garcia. And that makes up pretty much our org chart. Each shift is also accompanied by 15 firefighters and three engineer operators. Next slide, thank you. In 2016, we were very blessed to get our Class One rating by the ISO. The ISO is the Insurance Board of the United States and they rate fire departments and by that rating is how you get, or establish your insurance rates. And because we became one, an ISO Class One department, that gives our industry and our residents the best insurance premiums available. And as you see, go to the next slide, Brian, we'll break it down a little bit further. In Texas, there are about 2,469 rated fire departments and there are only 74 Class One fire departments. That puts us in a 97th percentile, next slide, Brian. Countrywide, it's even more impressive. There's over 39,000 fire departments and only 411 of them are Class One. And that puts us in a 99th percentile. So that, I'm very proud of that and the difference it makes in economic development is huge. A few years ago, Plano, who is an ISO Class One fire department as well, considered going back, they had a new Fire Chief that came on board and he was considering dropping their ISO down to a two because we have to do a lot of things to maintain it. The EDC Director said, wait a minute, Economic Development Corporation Director said, wait a minute, within three questions of all economic relocation questions, is our Class One, is your ISO rating? A lot of, he said, a lot of companies will not relocate to a community that's not an ISO One because the ISO One for the fire department reflects on the whole city. If they care enough to have an ISO One fire department, then they have good parks, good police department, good streets. It's just a reflection of the whole community. So getting that, and at the time, our economic development, economic development was trying to attract a company from Germany and they were competing, we were competing with Mesquite in another, another city that were already ISO One departments. Once our economic development president was able to show this company that we now had, we're also an ISO One, they chose to come to DeSoto. So the ISO is very important to get you good insurance rates on your homes, but also for our corporations and a reflection of our community when we look at economic development coming into DeSoto. Next slide, Brian. You know, for the last almost two years now, we've dealt with COVID and the fire department has been, here in DeSoto, has been on the tip of the spear, not only locally, regionally, statewide, in making sure that our people and our citizens were taking care of the best that we can. Ellis Davis Field House, about two years ago, we, I stood at the back of the room here with our Commissioner, John Price, and he asked Chief Cost and I if they moved or relocated a testing facility from one part of the county to Ellis Davis, would we support it? And Chief Cost and I told him absolutely and we've maintained our commitment out there for almost two years now. And Ellis Davis became, was originally just a testing facility and now has become a vaccination site as well. And as you see, getting the data from Dallas County, look at how many, we've had over 100, almost 110,000 COVID tests were, have been given at Ellis Davis and almost 64,000 vaccinations administered. That's an amazing number, but the main thing for us, Chief Cost and I, at the time, the City Manager at the time, Renee, and now followed up with our City Manager, Brandon Rod, and our elected officials was, we wanted to make sure that we had adequate testing, free testing in our area and now as well as vaccinations availability at Ellis Davis. It's done, I guess it's probably one of the longest-running testing sites, vaccination sites in the nation. Along with that, we were involved with the testing of our LTACs, our Long-Term Care Facilities. We helped put together teams that went out and tested there as well. We put mobile vaccine teams as well through the state mission assignment. DeSoto is a vaccination distribution site by the state. Therefore, we can take vaccine into DeSoto, which we've helped distribute out to the region. The homebound vaccination teams concept with the military personnel actually originated in DeSoto with, along with the state, came into DeSoto and asked us if we'd help put those teams together, which we did. We've since carried it on by ourselves to certain degree, but I think at this point, over 50 of our homebound have been vaccinated here in DeSoto. We're very, we're very happy with that and that's very important for these homebound people who can make it out to Fair Park or to Ellis Davis to get a chance to be vaccinated. And again, as I said, we have actually sent our paramedics downrange into the state in less resourced areas to vaccinate within the communities there. Next slide, Brian. And I'm going to turn it over to our Operations Chief, Assistant Chief, Brian Southern.
Thank you, Chief. So I'm going to dive a little bit more into the nuts and bolts of the actual fire department, of your fire department. And I'm going to speak on the fire side and when I'm finished, Chief Whitaker's going to speak on the EMS side. But there's a lot of people that don't realize that we are dual-certified or dual-trained. We are trained as firefighters and we are also trained as paramedics. So one shift I may come in and I'm on the fire truck and the next shift that I come in, I may be on the ambulance. So we play dual roles in there. But on the fire side in DeSoto, we have two first-out engines and one quint. And real fast on that, to differentiate, an engine has the ability to pump water and a quint also has the ability to pump water, but the quint has the big ladder on top. Now, all the, the fire trucks carry ladders, but the quint has the big, it's 107-foot aerial where we can reach up high if we need to. We also in this city have two reserve engines. So if one of our engines breaks down or it needs to go in for general service, then we have two engines on the ready that we can bring in. Or if we are getting busy or have special events coming in, we can call in other personnel to staff those engines and get them up and running as well. All our engines in DeSoto are ALS engines, which means we have paramedics onboard. In fact, everybody in our fire department is required to be a paramedic, all the way from Chief Duffield down to the, to the new people that we hire. We require everyone to, to go get and obtain paramedic. Fire suppression and EMS runs, this is always a big question, how much do we do? So the fire department does a lot on call volume and this is kind of an outline here. I'll just skip right to the totals. You can see in 2020, we ran 7,113 ambulance runs and on the fire side, on the fire truck side, we ran 5,749 runs. You add that together, it's a little over 12,000 total runs that we made out of three fire stations. So we stay pretty busy. You see there under the fire runs and EMS runs on that slide where it says time 4:42 on the fire side and time 4:31 on the EMS side. That is our average response time in the year 2020, from the time we were dispatched to the time we arrived on scene. The NFPA standard is six and a half minutes. That's what they say. They want you to get there from the time you get dispatched to the tones go off to you actually arrive on scene. And you can see, we're beating that by two minutes. We do that because we, Chief Duffield is real big on and we are on scramble times. That's how long it takes you to get out of the firehouse when the tones drop. So when the, the bell goes off, we hold our guys to high standards to get out as soon as they can because driving sometimes is uncontrollable. But how fast we get out of the fire station is very well within our control. At the top of this slide, real fast, you'll see our cost per emergency response at $1,006. That can be confusing sometimes, but basically what that's saying is, all the money it takes to run a fire department, from personnel to equipment to fire trucks and ambulances, all that divided by how many calls we run, it costs us approximately $1,006 per call every time we run a call. That is, that is good. We are, we are very, we take care of and try to be very efficient with the money that, that we're given by the City Council and the City Administrators. Structure fire responses. So in the year 2020, we ran 31 structure fires. And I want to clarify, when I say that we ran 31 structures, that is 31 working structures where we have a full response. There are plenty of fires that we're able to control with just a few apparatuses and we don't consider that an actual working structure. But we had 31 working structure fires in the city of DeSoto in 2020. All those fires together, if you added the Dallas County CAD value on those properties pre-fire, they were valued at $28,572,000. So it brings it to an average property value of just a little over $9 million. There were a couple apartment complexes that caught in fire in 2020 that really drives that value up. Of that $28 million value, we had $1.4 million worth of fire loss. That's an average loss of $46,819 per structure fire. So in other words, the fire department was able to save $27 million worth of property value that had caught fire, which is a 95% property value save rate that we have here in the city of DeSoto. So that's, that's us getting out, getting there fast, getting, getting the fire put out to try to save as much property as we possibly can. We do that by this slide right here. This is the NFPA Company Performance Standards that we make our guys adhere to. There's 10 standards that the National Fire Protection Agency puts out and our guys have to train and pass all 10 of these standards every year. These are time restraint standards that myself and Chief Duffield go out and we test the guys annually to make sure that we adhere to these standards. And that, we see on the fire ground when our guys pull up to an actual fire because they train on this so hard year-round that when the actual thing happens, they're ready to go.
I do want to add a little bit to that. What's important about that, we put this together in DeSoto. Chief Smith, our retired operations chief, along with Chief Southern with the administration, we put this together and it is, Brian published it when he graduated the Fire Chiefs Academy and departments all over the state call and ask us about how we do this. So this is something that's very innovative for DeSoto and I think the performance on the fire ground, 95% fire save, property save rate on a fire is amazing and a lot of it's because these are the, basically the playbook of the fire department. It would be just like an NFL team, say, what's your 10 best plays? There they are. Can you perform it to a high level, a performance standard? And our captains and our Battalion Chiefs know that we hold them very highly accountable for being able to pass those and they do a great rate doing that. So anyway, Brian was part of the team that put these together and I'm very proud of that and again, I'll leave it to you, Brian, sorry.
Yep, you're fine. And from here, we'll go over to Chief Whitaker and he'll explain the EMS side of the fires.
Okay, like Chief Duffield said, we have three stations. So therefore, we have three ambulances, one at each station. We also have two reserve ambulances. So if one of them has to go in for service or something like that, one of our frontlines, we always have the backup. So we're always going to be able to get there whenever we need to. Like Southern said, all of our members are paramedics, except for, sometimes when we first hire people, they're only MTS. So they have to go through school and such as that. Our ultimate goal is for everyone, from, like you said, Chief Duffield down, everybody will be a paramedic. We did have 7,113 EMS calls last year, which basically makes up about 60% of all calls. One thing I'm proud of is, of our guys, is last year, we had seven life-saving events. Those guys will be getting awards. What that basically means is, when our people get on scene, somebody was in a cardiac arrest. They performed CPR, they did their paramedic measures, they got that person to the hospital. Not only did they get the person to the hospital, the person also went through the ICU, went through everything they did, went through rehab, and they actually went back home. We don't actually consider a life-saving award unless that person is able to go back and actually be a functioning member of the community. So our EMS fees, I know this is a question, and these are established by the City Council in an ordinance. Our non-transports, if we show up to your house to take care of you because you've called 911, it's $125. On a BLS call, which is basically just your basic life support, for residents, it's 825; for non-residents, it's 900. ALS One, same thing, for residents, it's 1,050; for non-residents, it's 1,125. ALS Two, which is just a little bit more advanced, 1,200 and 1,275. One thing I wanted to mention, we've just recently went to a third-party billing company. We've always used a third-party billing company, we just went with a new company called Emergicon and they are based out of Terrell. I think this is going to help because in the past, we used a company that was basically based out of Ohio. And so a lot of our residents were getting bills that were stamped from Ohio and it was a lot of confusion for them. So I think actually getting one from Texas is going to actually help us with some of that confusion and we'll also, they'll be more localized in case we have to bring them in to answer any questions. All right, this is a big one for me that a lot of people don't know that the fire department does. We have a social work program. We've actually been doing this social work program since 2016. Our medical control is through Biotel, which is through Parkland. And in 2016, actually Chief Southern and a social worker named Katie that works with Biotel came together because the big deal at that time was this community paramedicine. And we thought, what's a better way to do that? So they put their heads together and they came up with this. And it was frustrating for us in the field because like I said, they came up with this before I ever got up here. It was frustrating because as firemen, we're always going out, we're dealing with these people, we're trying to help these people, but all we can really do is get them to the hospital. You know, we get them to the hospital and they get in the system, they get in the hospital system and it felt, a lot of times to us, like we couldn't do, we wanted to do more and we just couldn't. Well, this, this program actually allows us, and Katie, our social worker, has trained a lot of our guys, they can actually go to these homes now and they can identify. And they can identify these people that actually truly need help and that have been caught up in the systems where it's just, maybe it's just this returning system and everything like that that they get caught up in. She actually can help get them the help they actually need. So basically the way it works is, since she has trained these people, or our paramedics, I should say, they'll go out, they'll identify whether it's, you know, somebody needs longer health care, whether they just, they need more than they can stay by themselves, they need people that can come in and actually help them in their homes. Guys will write it up, they'll send it to me, I get it to Katie. Katie and I, or Katie and another fireman, will go out and visit with these families, those individuals, and they will, she, at that time, she kind of takes over and she helps these people to basically try to better their lives or help the family members better the lives of the patients. This is just kind of a quick synopsis of how the thing works. Go ahead. So one thing that it showed us, we get a lot of referrals, but since 2016, we've had 61 actual referrals. And so we get a lot, but we're only counting them if they've actually engaged back with us. 61 of those, 61% of those referrals have actually been placed in assisted living, health care, skilled nursing, hospice. So they've actually got the help they needed. Now, a big thing is 95% of all these people we've went out, they've had insurance, whether it's commercial insurance, Medicare, Medicaid. And then if they don't have that, the other 3%, to bring it up to 98%, we have actually got them into the Parkland system, which actually will get them some insurance. So what does that tell us? Is that, one, EMS, we're there. We're the fastest people to get there, we're the fastest people to recognize the situations. It also tells us about our community. Most of the people in our community have some sort of insurance. The problem is, is a lot of our people, especially our elderly, don't know how to access the system. They don't know how to actually use that insurance and everything to its full ability. So with this social work program, it allows fire and the social worker to actually come in and help hold hands if need be and walk them through and show them how the system can actually work for them.
Real quick, before we get to Brandon, I want to, the first patient that we went out on, when Brian and I were talking about putting this system together, it wasn't about going out and monitoring, like a community paramedicine program, we'll go out and monitor and check on people. We wanted to fix people and give them the help they needed. The first patient that Brian and Katie went on, this lady, bless her heart, had called us 11 times in 10 days. She was a diabetic off her medication and when Katie and Brian went out there to her, she said, "Look, I'm in a, I'm in a subsidized senior apartment, I have a very limited income and I'm a diabetic. So I have to choose between food and my medication and I'm tired of eating dog food." That breaks your heart. Brian and Katie helped her get into the Parkland program to get her medications where she could, they'd have to make that tough choice. And I don't think she's called us since then, since then. But that's the kind of impact that this program has made. I'm very proud of these two, that Brian and Katie had ran this. It's been published in Jim's Magazine, which is the premier publication for EMS and it's been talked about at several conferences. And again, it started here in DeSoto and again, the great thing is, it's fixing people and finding solutions, just not monitoring them. And again, I'm very proud of the job that Brian does there and Brian before him. So turn it over now, Brandon, our Fire Marshal.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to talk about fire inspections. This is one of the aspects of my job that I really enjoy the most. I make it a point to go in and see everything. I'm one of the only people that's pretty much been in every business. And one of the things that I always look for is fire hazards because if I can prevent it at my inspection stage, we don't have apparatuses going out, we don't have firemen going out putting their lives on the line. So that's why I'm very passionate about what I do. So there are over 1,100 businesses in the city. They range from commercial warehouses to apartments, restaurants, daycare centers, nursing homes, assisted living, foster homes, boarding homes, DeSoto ISD schools, private schools, and other various businesses. One of the things I look at is the sprinkler systems. I do permits and testing. I do underground piping, hydrostatic testing and visuals, as well as overhead piping, hydrostatic pressure test and visuals. I also look at the alarm side. So you have the sprinkler side, you also have the alarm side. As Fire Marshal, I ensure that the alarm plans and installation are in line with the 2018 International Fire Codes, our adopted local ordinances, and the NFPA 72 National Fire Alarm and Signaling Codes. In the event that there is a structure fire, part of my job is to investigate for cause and origin. If arson plays a role, if arson is suspected, I assist in the arrest and prosecution. I also do educational talks, public talks. I'll go to schools, I go to churches. This was, this was a letter that I received from the United Methodist Church of the Disciple at 220 South Cockerhill Road. I had a chance to speak with, they call themselves the Platinum Plus Senior Adult Ministry and I love them, a bunch of passionate citizens. Had a chance to just sit there and talk to them and just kind of decode some old wives' tales that they might've had and I really enjoyed them. This letter just is basically them saying, hey, we enjoyed you, we would love to have you back out. I attend weekly developmental review meetings, or DRC. I also review site plans to make sure that they comply with current codes and ordinances. And on occasion, I have to write citations if, if people aren't doing what they're supposed to. That's part of the job that, that gets people to get in line with what they're supposed to do. with what they're supposed to do.
Okay, moving on to fire training. Okay, there we go. We're moving on to fire training. We were established in 1980 by firefighter Joe Brown. He carried that torch for a long time until he passed it on to Chief Suther and Captain Kirk and myself in 2013. So the Fire Academy and EMT program serve as your first step into the fire service. In the state of Texas, they say that you have to have both fire and EMT to become a firefighter. So we serve as getting these young adults in here and getting them trained in their basic structured firefighter and EMT. We also provide additional training to existing firefighters that are looking to promote or just extend their training a little bit more. Our training center is self-sustained. So we are working off of an enterprise fund. So we're pretty proud about that. So we offer the Fire Academy two times a year. We're a 16-week program. Lots of blood, sweat, and tears go into the 564 hours that each firefighter completes. We're certified and regulated by the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. They let us know what we have to do. We go above what they tell us what we need to do. They, they tell us that we need 460 hours, and we're at 564 because we offer more than just the basic. We're currently on Class 66. So we started in 1980. So we've been putting out quite a few firefighters at ranging 45 recruits per year. So our EMT is a fast-track program. We are six weeks in the classroom, and then they go into the field and they do their clinicals. They have 72 hours of clinicals. Before COVID, it was 48 hours in the fire station on the ambulance. And it was 24 in the hospital. We have since moved to 72 clinical hours on the ambulance. So as you heard, the stats from Chief Whitaker and Suther, our, our guys are extremely busy in DeSoto. They run a lot of calls. And on top of that, they are still helping us to produce grade A firemen. So they are always working, whether it's with students or with our community. We also hire back quite a few of our students that have gone through our training program. We put out close to 100 students per year in EMT. So there are some students that choose not to go through the fire program but still want to do EMT and go on to paramedic school. So also with the Fire Training Center, we have regional training and leadership. So we are a Class A fire training facility. We keep our firefighters local when they're training as where other cities have to put their firemen in different cities, which brings us to Duncanville, Cedar Hill, and Lancaster that all send their guys here to DeSoto to train at our facility. Occasionally, we do train other places. But we specialize in technical skill training as well.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to talk about emergency management for this city. A lot of people aren't familiar with what emergency management is. It's basically planning for, responding to, and recovering from any disasters or emergencies that, that impact the city. And emergency management, sorry, go back one more time. We're going to go through what that looks like in pictures because I think that's the easiest way to understand it. So emergency management is a continuous cycle. It's forever going. We start in the mitigation phase, which is things that we can do ahead of a disaster to lessen any of those negative impacts that it would have on the city or our residents. So if we're thinking about flooding, how can we construct our drainage system so that the next time we get a lot of rain, like we're experiencing now, it's not actually impacting anyone's homes and property, it's draining the way that the city wants it to? Another example are putting school resource officers in schools that would serve as a deterrent, hopefully, to active attackers who choose not to target schools in our city. Also, if they do choose to target a school, then there's an officer there who can more quickly respond. From the mitigation phase, we move into preparedness. So these are, this is training anyone and everyone who has any part in an emergency response, which is everybody. So on the city side, I work closely with all departments to make sure that everyone knows what they need to do in the event of a disaster, make sure they're comfortable with responding. I also take that information to local businesses and churches to see if they need any help building up their emergency plan so that they can respond if they're impacted. And then also with residents. COVID kind of put a halt on that. We couldn't meet in person. But now that things are opening back up, my goal is to have some preparedness trainings for the public. Because you would be the first one impacted, and I want everyone to feel confident and know what they need to do in an emergency to set themselves up for success. So we prepare. And then an event happens, and it can be any event. We learned this year to really expect the unexpected. So we're very familiar with tornadoes, but now winter storms and now a pandemic. So something happens to us, and then we immediately move into the response phase. This is the phase that most people are familiar with because this is lights and sirens. So police and fire are responding to the scene. They're protecting life and property. And I, as the emergency manager, come in right behind them. And my role here is to fill any needs that they have. So if we have a large amount of people that are impacted and homes are destroyed, they'll ask me to set up a shelter. So I'm pulling out our plans for shelters. We're calling the Red Cross. We're setting up the building. We're setting up the cots. I'm calling the Salvation Army. We're getting food brought in, and we're setting up a shelter. That's an example of something in the response phase. So once the initial response is over, there's no more life or property to protect, people are pretty stable, we move into the recovery phase. And the recovery phase is where we're picking up debris. We're trying to get the city back to its normal stage. And unfortunately, we can't go back to the way it was before the disaster, but we kind of adapt and go back to a new normal. Some things that can happen here are setting up a family assistance center, picking up debris, getting people connected with FEMA to get some financial assistance. So Winter Storm Yuri, we've all talked about probably to death, and you don't want to talk about it anymore. That one happened in February. The event itself is over, but we are still in the recovery phase from that event. So recovery can go on for a long time. And then once the recovery phase does, phase eventually ends, we go right back to mitigation. We sit down at the city level and we discuss, "Okay, what can we do now if this were to happen again to make it even better for our residents and lessen the impacts of that, of that negative event?" Next slide, please. Okay. Another part of emergency management is monitoring the weather. North Texas is one of the most disaster-prone areas of the United States. Most people would think it's California with the wildfires or Florida with the hurricanes, but it's actually right here where all of us chose to live. And that's okay, we're going to do it together. But that's why preparedness is so important. So some of the things that the city commits to on the emergency management side is we make sure that at least one emergency manager, so I serve as the emergency management coordinator for the four best Southwest cities, Duncanville, DeSoto, Cedar Hill, and Lancaster. And then also Chief Duffield is the emergency management coordinator for the city. So there's the two of us. And then the fire chiefs also assist us with emergency management roles. So one of us, and usually multiple of us, are always in the city or in the area at all times. Because we know that weather comes through when we least expect it. So we want to make sure that someone's here to get the ball rolling if needed. We also do that for city events. So anytime we have a city event coming up, we make sure that we're working with those departments ahead of time to write those emergency plans. And then during the event, we're monitoring in case anything happens and they need our assistance. During severe weather, we use a tool called NWS Chat, which is a program where we communicate directly with the National Weather Service. So we're watching storms as they roll through the area. We're talking the whole time that we're watching it. And if there's anything severe, then we would activate sirens. And there's a couple, you know, phases after that. But someone is always watching so that if something happens, we're ready to go. The next thing I want to talk about is Code RED. Code RED is a mass notification system that the city uses to communicate with residents in the event of an emergency. I hope that all of you are signed up. If you're not signed up, then I'd love to talk to you about it. But really, what it is, is you as a resident or even as a business owner, as someone who spends a lot of time in the city of DeSoto, I recommend that you sign up. So you go online. You get to choose exactly what kind of alerts you want to be alerted for. You choose exactly how you want to receive that alert. Do you want a text message, a phone call, an email? You enter that in, you customize it to your preferences. And then anytime, we'll, we'll talk about severe weather first, for an example. Anytime that a tornado warning gets issued by the National Weather Service, and it's probably when you're sleeping in the middle of the night because that's when weather loves to come through, as soon as that gets issued, if you signed up for that alert, you are going to get it directly to your phone, which is wonderful because now you were woken up and you have time to grab your family and go shelter. If there's hail coming through, hopefully you had a heads up and you could go outside and move your car so that you're not dealing with hail damage the next day. I think it's a great system. I highly recommend that everybody get it. You can go online to the city's website and sign up for that. And the last thing that I want to talk about are the outdoor warning sirens. So the city of DeSoto has 10 sirens. You can see in our map here that those are strategically placed around the city to make sure that every area here has coverage. There's a misnomer that these are tornado sirens. We don't call them tornado sirens because we don't solely activate them for tornadoes. So we call them outdoor warning sirens. They can be activated for a few things. Most of the time, it's tornadoes because that's what we get hit with the most here. But there's a few criteria. So as I mentioned, we're watching the weather, excuse me, the weather as it's rolling through. If any of these criteria are met, then we make the decision to activate the sirens to warn the public. So that would be a tornado warning being issued or there's an observed tornado. So there's storm spotters. People love to chase storms. I don't recommend it, but people love to do it. So people watch. They communicate that directly with the National Weather Service. As soon as the National Weather Service has that, they let us know, and then we can make the call to activate. So if there's a tornado seen or issued on the radar, we can see it coming. Also hail, an inch and a quarter in diameter or greater. Destructive winds over 70 miles per hour or greater. And then also any other public safety emergency deemed by the city that we need to warn you about. So for example, if there's a large chemical spill and we need people to go inside as quickly as possible, we might activate the sirens. So we have, this leaves it open for us if there's something non-weather related that we can make that call. I want to make sure that everybody knows what you're supposed to do if you hear the sirens go off. So they are outdoor warning sirens. They're not built to warn you when you're inside your home. So that's why it's really important for you to sign up for things like Code RED. So you'll get that alert if you're inside. If you're outside of your house and maybe don't have your phone with you, that's where the sirens would come into play. So if you're outside and you hear sirens going off, you should immediately go indoors to any structurally sound building that you can find and then look for additional information. So whether that's pulling out your phone and pulling up the local news, turning on the TV, checking for a Code RED alert. And then when you have that information, then you make your next move. If it's a tornado warning, now you're going to go shelter. If it's hail, then you can stay inside away from windows. So you go from there. I also want to talk about the monthly testing. We test the sirens. We try to the first Wednesday of every month at 2:00 PM. So if you hear them going off the first Wednesday at 2:00 PM, it's likely a test unless it's very dark and stormy outside. So we only test if it's blue skies, clear. It doesn't look dark and gloomy outside. So if it was like it is today, we would not be sounding sirens. But we sound them for those monthly tests to make sure that they work. So we get a report of the sirens every day, twice a day, actually. But we want to make sure that when we push the button, it's actually going to sound and do what it needs to do. So if you're curious to hear what it sounds like, the next first Wednesday at 2:00, when it's a sunny day, you can step outside and listen to it. And then, you know, you can train your ear and train those around you that that's what the siren sounds like, and you can respond from there.
Thank you, Lauren. Talking about something that's very important to the Southwest cities is our, our regional cooperation. And our fire departments down here have done a great job with that. To start with, we have an automatic aid or response with Cedar Hill and Duncanville, and to a lesser degree Lancaster, but especially with Cedar Hill and Duncanville since we all share Southwest Regional Dispatch. Our commitment is the fastest, closest apparatus, regardless of whose city it is, will go. So there's times where you will have an emergency in any of the three cities here, and in Lancaster to a certain degree, but primarily the three other cities, that the quickest, fastest ambulance is going to get there, the quickest, fastest fire engine is going to get there. And when we do have a structured fire, as Brian talked about earlier, when we send four to five apparatus, fire apparatus and two or three ambulances and a couple of chiefs, there's never going to be a time when it's just going to be all DeSoto or all Cedar Hill or all Duncanville or, for that case, all Lancaster. We all work together. And probably using the automatic approach and to get the manpower from all three or four cities together, it probably saves us having to build another fire station in DeSoto and Cedar Hill and Duncanville because otherwise, we just couldn't meet the minimum national standards for fire ground. But working together, at one point in time in my career, in the, in the way back, each city was its own kingdom, and you didn't cross borders. But now, it's a very borderless system, and we use our, our automatic resources together. The four fire chiefs in the Southwest, we get together and we talk regularly, and we work together as one team. If one does it, we try to all follow suit. We've also adopted the Blue Card Instant Management System as how we run our fire grounds. Also, our fire grounds are ran, our communication models are the same for all four cities. And it makes it very easy to where first into an app, into a fire where there'd be, in any of the four cities, they can, they can take command, they can run the fire. And regardless, if we might have a fire in DeSoto and if our battalion chief's on another call, we may have a battalion chief or chief officer from Cedar Hill or Duncanville running the fire for a long period of time, maybe the whole incident. It doesn't matter because we all run it the same way. Our firefighters train together. Segueing down to our next thing, we have a training coordinator, Frank Becerra, who retired from the Fort Worth Fire Department after over 30 years. Frank was also the Assistant Director of Tarrant County Fire School. Frank now runs the regional training for all four cities. So our, our fire training is basically broken into fire groups, training groups. And each one of the groups have fire apparatus from all four cities together. So we all train together, we all work together. So again, basically what we have is now basically, what we have is now basically, what, 12 fire stations in a, in a four city group. We're about the size of Arlington or Plano, all together, working together on the fire ground. We work in regional purchasing. So when we buy a fire apparatus, or bunker gear, or air packs, we all train, or we all purchase together, try to get in, regional contracts to get the best pricing possible. And then finally, Lauren Sanchez in Emergency Management is a regional coordinator. We're one of the first groups of cities to do that within a state, but we have had cities from Keller, South Lake, West Lake, Collis, Addison Farmer's Branch, Carrollton, they've looked at doing it, putting one person to run the regional coordination for all the smaller cities. And it just makes sense. It's a, it's a cost, it's a, it's a cost multiplier. But more than that, we get great coordination and better effective fire, emergency management using Lauren, as we, as we, as we do with Frank in doing our fire training. So the regional cooperation is a very important part of working as a Southwest group. I always call it the two Es, when the efficiency and the effectiveness line up, it makes sense. And using Lauren, using Frank, and using these processes do just that, the ease lineup. You know, in, in closing, just talking about, I have an amazing staff up here. I have an amazing group of firefighters that I'm blessed to work with, a great city. You know, just recently, recently, you know, we, we looked at our COVID testing and vaccination program. And you know, we found out that, got the data from Dallas County today, and Matt was very gracious in helping me get it. You know, there have been over 22, almost 23,000 people in DeSoto that's been vaccinated. That's 43.2% of our population has been fully vaccinated. That's well ahead of the state, that's well ahead of a lot of the national standards. That's amazing. You know, as we saw earlier in the Ellis Davis, we had had over, well over 100,000 people being tested. A lot of that was folks in DeSoto being tested. Early on, our numbers were high for cases. And I told, at the time, Mayor McCowen, I said, I said, Ms. Curtis Dean, just hang in there. It's because people are getting tested, that's why the numbers are going to be high. Because actually, I think it was, the numbers of people sick, the people tested, was consistent everywhere. But we just got tested in DeSoto. You know, people were, were masked in DeSoto. We got, we worked with our, our Chamber of Commerce, our churches, to make sure that we did everything we could to get people tested, to get people vaccinated, to make sure people had food. You know, our CARE Act money, you know, you know, our city manager, Brandon Wright, was over that. And you know, one thing I was so impressed with, with Brandon was, our CARE Act money went to people who needed help in rent, in businesses that needed utilities paid, and others. And I talked to other communities, and frankly, that money, well, the money went back to fire chiefs or somebody, hey, I'm getting this and I'm getting that from our CARE Act money. And I said, where's your CARE Act money going? I said, our CARE Act money's going to our people, you know, and, 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 you know, Brandon and our, our city management office and our elected officials made sure that that money went to the people. Hey, we have taxes to get our stuff. But I was very proud of the fact that that's where our money went. But I'm very proud of our fire department and the COVID response. I'm also very proud of the citizens of DeSoto, how they've reacted positively to that. You know, additionally, trying to bring our fire department to be more reflective of our, of our community is one of our top priorities. We, we have a scholarship program that we're giving out, working with the school district, Dr. Weaver, and the school district to try to put about $30,000 in scholarships into our fire academy to try to create more firefighters from within the community. Saturday, we had another round of our physical agility test, and one of the young men that was going through their process, and I hope we get a chance to look at him, we were talking about that. He grew up in DeSoto. He actually played for the NFL for a while, worked for the Baltimore Ravens, great young man. But I'm just hoping, I said, man, you're exactly who I'd love. Because it's just makes a community stronger. When they see in their public safety, whether it be in their, their police squads, or their fire engines, or their ambulances, young people who grew up in DeSoto, it just gives the community a better feeling about the public safety. It's just good business. And we want the young people who have invested in DeSoto, grew up here to be in our, our, our fire stations. Recently, we had a process for the first time in almost better part of 15, 20 years, that we didn't require any certifications. We just let anybody that wanted to test that was under 34, under 35 years to test. Right now, we have four of that top, of that group that went through our process. And it's a civil service process, so it's blind. We don't, we can't influence it anyway. But of the four people who we tested off that group, we hired three African Americans and an Hispanic, and two of them are women. You know, we had a fifth person, a white male who actually fell out of, of our, dropped out of our fire academy. So again, when you look at the fire service demographics in Texas, it is not reflective of our community at all. And so the only way to get that, and I give, thank you, you know, my city manager, my mayor, for letting us go out there. Because when we hire somebody that's not, that's not certified, we put them through our fire academy, put them, send them over to Michelle and Craig and, and the, and the crew over there. We're paying their salary, we're paying for the school, all that. It's almost a hundred thousand dollar investment in these, in these people to become firefighters, you know, and be paramedics. But it's worth it to get these people from our community. You know, but just in closing, I just want to say that, you know, our organization has one, has really two thoughts. One, we treat everyone like it's our family. Every one of our, every one of our firefighters and paramedics in our stations know one thing. If they have to come and answer to me about a call they made, it's one easy. If it was your family, if it was you, is that, is that how you'd want to be treated? Number two, we do the right thing at the right time. And in order to do that, we try to train our people up to the highest standard, empower them, give them good equipment, give them good resources, and turn them loose on this job. Because one thing about being a firefighter, there's never the same call twice. We need people who can think, that can take the information and training and apply it properly. There's no algorithms they can run. There's no A, B, C, D. When they get to a call, like the other night, at 2:00, 2:30 in the morning, a fire engine's out blocking for an accident on 35. And what happens? A car runs into it, protecting six police officers that are working that accident. That driver put that apparatus in the perfect place. The captain had his crew stayed in the vehicle secured, not out wandering around like we would used to do. And we had a good outcome. Danny did a great job with his crew. We're very proud of that. But that goes to the fact that we empowered our people, they did the right thing at the right time, and we had a good outcome. You know, we have a great fire department here. We have some great people here. We're supported by a, a great council and mayor. I remember my first city council meeting, I was listening to, then council member Curtis Dean McCowen asked Mayor Sherman, why can't we give the employees, instead of a 1% raise, as the city manager asked for, why can't we give them a 2% raise? And I'm like, where I came from, that was unheard of. I'm like, wow, I am in the right place. You know what? The people of DeSoto are very gracious people to our, our fire department, you know, and we, we love to support them. So again, if there's ever an issue about service, if there's ever an issue about what happened, please contact me directly. I can delegate responsibilities from amazing people up here. But ultimately, I'm accountable for everything. You can't delegate accountability. And I am accountable, and I take that accountability very well, because I have some great people that support me. And I have some great, I have a great city manager, and a deputy city managers, and a great elected officials and mayor. And so, again, if there's anything or questions about the fire department, please contact me and let me know. And let's talk about it. Because we want to do one thing, we want to deliver the best service possible, and we want to make sure that you feel like that you're treated like your family. Because in my eyes, you are, you are. And with that, I guess I'll turn it over to my, my mayor, Ms. Brock.
Thank you, Chief Duffield. This has been amazing information that we have received from you all tonight. And we did get our stream going up. So Terry, if you could check and see if there are any questions on Facebook. However, we do have some audience members tonight, yay for that. So I want to make sure that we extend an, an opportunity to you all, if you all want to come up to the mic, if you have any questions for our fire chief or any of them that are here on our panel tonight, we definitely will extend that opportunity. But Chief, I would like to see if you could expound before we do that, if you could expound just a little bit more, because I'm one that values the importance of opportunities, right? And you guys have an incredible opportunity that you've been seeking individuals to try to participate. When you mentioned the scholarship, and I know that there had been some information circulating around on social media, we'd all been trying to share. Could you, is, is that opportunity still available, or has the, have the doors closed on that?
No, and in fact, I, I talked to Dr. Weaver's staff Friday, and over the weekend, I had a list of names that we're going to start talking to and trying to get involved. The great thing about being a firefighter, if you like helping people, if you like being part of a team, you know, it's a great job. And it's a great job that a lot of people don't, especially, as I said, it was traditionally a Scotch-Irish kind of a job, it's just a family job. And so if you weren't in that group, you might not know about it. But it's very inclusive, because once you become on board, it doesn't matter who you are, you're family. And so we really want to try to encourage these young people, because if you go to fire school, EMT school, and then paramedic school, it takes about 18 months. And we can, if we can, if we can go through fire and EMT school on our scholarship, get you a Pell Grant, a Stafford grant, or Stafford loan, and go to Dallas College and get your paramedic cert, by the time you're 20 years old, if you're a high school graduate, you're a firefighter, paramedic, I believe you are gold out there in the market. The way that Dallas area is blowing up, public safety, people are needed. And a paramedic firefighter, as I said, is almost a hundred thousand dollar education you bring to the table. If you have a good background, you're going to, you're going to walk into a $60,000 a year job. And it's with a 30-year shelf life. And again, for all of us that are raising kids, I just graduated my baby girl from University of Arkansas after almost $80,000 to $100,000 in cost. Aubrey's going to walk into a $40,000 a year job. It's, so it's a, so really, for a lot of people, when you're looking at what, you know, your kids could do, steer them to the fire service, because it's a great job. And we're, we're creating these scholarships to make sure that no one, because Michelle will tell you, at times, people call and they just can't afford our tuition, because we are enterprise funded. We want to make sure that everybody has a chance to come to the table and be a part of this job if they want to.
So if they want to take part in that before that opportunity passes, who do they need to contact? Michelle?
Contact me directly at the Fire Training Center. They can come and visit me, or they can give me a call, email me. So also, I want to elaborate on that a little bit for the parents that are unsure about the fire service, and are pushing them more towards college. So a lot of people don't realize that once you become a firefighter, and you are in a department, you can go back to college. There's a firefighter's tuition waiver once you were a firefighter, and you get to go back and you can complete a degree in a fire-related field. Chief Southern is, is proof of it. So.
And what's the number or email to reach you?
The best way to call, is to give me a call, and then we can make contact other way, other ways, whether it's a visit or email. And it's 972-230. I'm sorry, I just gave them your number. 972-223-6858.
Okay, great. And that's Michelle Hinrichs.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We do have a question from our audience, from former Mayor Pro Temperatures. She, you can come on up if you'd like.
Do I need to be my name, my name and address?
Uh, no name, no address.
Oh, okay.
We know you, ma'am.
We're not.
No, that's fine. It's, it's an official town hall meeting. So thank you so much this, this evening for the presentation, Chief and your staff. I do, the question I have is about the Field House, the Ellis Field House. You said it was a partnership between Dallas County. And what was the cost for the city of DeSoto? And if there was a cost, was it from the fire budget? Was it from the general fund? Is it going to be, you said something about the CARES Act, but I don't know that, that that's part of that.
The Ellis Field House is a very unique situation. It started out as a federal DHS site that we were asked to help support. Therefore, we would be eligible for a FEMA reimbursement as an applicant. We would submit to FEMA, and they would reimburse us, just like if we, okay. Then it became a city of Dallas event, then Dallas backed out, and then it became a county event. So it's really kind of gone through, but the whole time, we've stayed out there as a partner to support it. Right now, we have our costs that have, and Chief Southern has been working with finance to put the cost down to FEMA, and we're going to be reimbursed, it went to 100%. So we're going to be reimbursed 100% of all our costs through FEMA. And it's just a matter of when we get the money, not if we get the money. At this point, Brian, what would you say roughly the costs are, that we're going to recover?
So I've been working with, in fact, daily FEMA calls me, and we answer questions and go back and forth. But we're working from the start of the event till December of 2020. And between fire and police, we're looking at in and around probably 1.2 million in reimbursement that will be coming back to us. Now, that's, that's salary, but you also understand, we've got equipment out there, and they pay us for that equipment that's out there, the fire equipment, the police equipment. So that'll be extra money that'll be coming in. And then here directly, I'll be starting work on 2021. So from January moving forward, and we'll start working on that. But right now, we're looking at about 1.2 million coming back to December.
And one thing that we said that last year, we, we absorbed it in last year's budget, and we came under budget, the police department came under budget. So we did, were able to maneuver things around to absorb the budget in the budget. So when we get that money in here, it's just going to be, just a, a good thing for the city to get that money in there. So we, no one went under budget, over budget that I, that I'm aware of. And we, we were able to absorb it and maneuver that way.
Okay. And thank you for the, the background history. I, I hear a lot of people complaining about the 40-hour week. I'm going to remind them now about the firemen. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Big while. Thanks for the presentation. I learned something new. So I really appreciate understanding the depth of what you do on the social services side. So I think that's really awesome. My name's Nicole Raphael. My question is with regard to transport. When someone calls 911, and then, you know, of course, that's an emergency, if they have a special condition, and, and if they have a preferred hospital over your preferred hospital, can they go to that hospital? Or what is the process?
Our policy is we go to the closest appropriate hospital. And the closest appropriate hospital may mean Charlton, because it's a, it's the geographically closest. But we also have hospitals, if your children go to Children's, trauma goes to Big Methodist, Central Methodist, Burns go to Parkland, sickle cell kids go to Medical City. We, just, and we do look at the individual situations. If you have a situation where your oncologist or your cardiologist, where it really makes, you know, you have to go there, then we, we try to accommodate that. But we try to, to go to the closest appropriate hospital, simply because we have three ambulances for, and we make a lot of calls. And there are times, as Brian showed, we, we make these lives, these life saves, a lot of times for extreme, for, for active heart attacks, for active strokes, for obstructed airways, for, for difficult breach bursts. There are things that only quick transportation are going to save your life, trauma calls. You have to have that ambulance. We're all paramedics on the engine, but you got to get in that box, and you got to go to the hospital. So therefore, we try to do everything we can to keep our ambulances located regionally and back in service as close as we can. And I've had that question before, I had a question from another chief in the area that didn't like the fact that we go to the appropriate hospital. And I said, for ALS MICUs, our highest level of customer service is saving lives. Anything that I can do to keep these boxes available to save lives is, is a policy that we follow. And if, and if someone wants to go from DeSoto, and they want to go to Fort Worth, or they want to go to another hospital because of, that's where they want to go, there are actually private ambulances that will actually transport them there, and probably roughly at the same cost that we're going to charge. And, you know, and that's just the way it is, because we want to keep our ambulances located in DeSoto as much as possible. In case you have that, that the worst day possible, that we get there as quickly as we can. Because in my experience, I have been on a fire engine on an acute medical call, waiting for an ambulance, watching someone literally die, to a point where I, a couple of times, I thought about just throwing them in the fire engine and getting them to the hospital, because that was what's going to save their lives. So we try to keep everything, you know, along those thoughts of, we're here to save lives.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
It looks like that is concluding all of our time tonight. However, I believe there are some questions. Okay, we'll make time for that.
We do have one question. Lago Spencer says, why aren't more minorities recruited? Every firefighter I meet is from far east Texas.
And Chief, you spoke a little bit to that a moment ago.
Absolutely. And I, I can't disagree with that. I mean, we say that 903 is east Texas, and a lot of us grew up in the 903 area code, because, and my friends and family were firefighters, and that's why it's a family job. And we just have to get out there and expose this job. And once people get exposed to this job, it's a matter of what, what you, how God made you. You're going to love this job, and you're going to be part of our family. And that's just a matter of, we just have to be more proactive and, and turn people on to this job, and it'll take care of itself.
So also, in efforts to recruit more minorities is the reason we are putting the scholarship in place. Not, not just to recruit strictly from DeSoto, but to give other people opportunity.
Absolutely. And that is something that I, as mayor, can absolutely attest to the efforts that you all are making. And Chief, you know, we talk about that all the time. It's about exposure, exposure, exposure. A lot of times, they don't select that, because they simply haven't been exposed to it, or they don't understand the benefits, or they don't understand the opportunity that comes with professions such as fire and police and those things like that. So I definitely want to publicly thank you all for the efforts that are being made to, again, expose our young people, especially coming out of DeSoto High School, to the opportunities that exist within our fire department. So thank you all very much.
I mean, our, our last group that we hired, four, I mean, we have, talking to Mr. Spencer, you know, we understand, and I think if, if we can get the, the young people from this area to, to just look at this job, they're, they're going to like it. And we're going to, every group's got their, their great, great people in it, and we're going to, we're going to grab them up. We're going to grab them up.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions from our audience? Or any that we see here? Again, if you're watching the replay of this, you absolutely can still submit any questions directly to our fire chief, Jerry Duffield, at JDuffield@desototexas.gov, and he will take the time to respond and answer those questions. But if there are no more questions, or any other comments, final comments from anyone on our panel tonight, we will close out our meeting. This has been really great, informative. I think our residents will appreciate the information that was shared here tonight. And hearing nothing else, we will adjourn tonight's meeting, for lack of a better word. We will adjourn tonight. I'm not even sure what time it is. But it's about 7:30, I think. All right, thank you all. Have a great night.